Mayor, you're live again.
Okay, folks, I'm sorry we lost the signal for a little bit there. The recap on item number five, the discussion on the surcharge, possible surcharge fee on credit card payments. We decided we're gonna put it into decision off perhaps to the June first meeting. Give us all the time to review some and give the citizens a chance to come back to us if anybody has any comments on the thing. But is there a better way to approach this? Try to get some of that sixty-three thousand dollars back that the cities are currently paying for their service? And also gives all of us up here an opportunity to talk to our department heads and talk to citizens. Get the input from everybody. Okay, now we're gonna go to item number six, which is the home-based business license. On lawn care service and pressure washing. Three twelve East Trade Street.
Wanted to base a lawn care and pressure washing. Come to his house and traffic will be hanging out because he'll be going out. And I have no room with this home business.
I second that. Have a motion, have a second. Okay, call for a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in both the same side? Hear none? Welcome to the city of Centerville. We love our home-based business people. Thank you, Mr. Bono, for applying with us here. Councilman Wright is now with us here and.
Hello.
Hope everything, everything goes well, right?
It's, that meeting's next week.
Oh, he's being good.
We're great, that roof will, it's good.
Roof will be good. Yep. Okay. We're going down to item number seven, which is compensation for elections. Councilman Evans and the city clerk, Penfield, please.
Yes, sir, so I guess it's no surprise that we have an election going on in the city soon. And for this election, the city has contracted with Houston County Board of Elections to act as the election superintendent for this local election. And the reason is, is that we don't want citizens to have to come in here. So generally for elections, the city clerk acts as the election superintendent. And because we're having the county come in, they will be the appointed superintendent. However, for us, and they will do that, and they will also receive the absentee ballots. And we normally compensate the city clerk for doing this, okay? And I believe that we should still compensate the city clerk for doing this because she's gonna have to do all the duties. Except for the, when you check the box to certify the election in the end. So it's my recommendation that we still compensate the city clerk for her duties based on the employment agreement that we have with her at this time.
So, Mr. Mayor. And include elections if intended, but she's performing the same duties. So we thought it would be best and clear for the auditors if that payment was made, that it was approved and a council meeting for her to get paid.
So, Mr. Mayor, based on that, I move that we approve and pay the city clerk for her duties during the election coming up in June, June, and if we have to have a runoff.
Second. Motion on the second. This is, this is really important too. Requires her to work more hours and much more hours than you do. And it puts a lot of actual strain in more ways than one on her ability to operate everything. If she does a great job of it, she's able to do it. And it's compensation package developed without using mine. Requires a whole lot more than all the decisions of the city clerk. Okay, have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in both the same side? Okay, that passes. Thank you, Christopher, for being willing to do all that.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, item number eight is approval agreement. Please talk K nine Bono, Councilman Evans and Chief Duncan, please.
Okay, so Chief, if you would step up to the podium, I'd appreciate that.
Mayor, councilman. As we know, today is Lieutenant Salz's last day with the Center Park Department. And also, he has been the K nine handler for his K nine Bono. K nine Bono is approximately two years now from being at retirement age as well as working in their college and training dog. And Lieutenant Salz has asked if he purchased Bono from the city as a fee to take him with him when he leaves. We did a little research on the, we cost him out what it would take for Bono's age to be purchased from the actual trainer that's in Dewey County. And the trainer gave us like fifteen hundred dollars. Lieutenant Salz has stated he will pay that fifteen hundred dollars, which he has already taken the pressure issue for, that he would make that purchase ninety-four hours in person.
And so, we understand the relationship that's developed between a working police dog and the officer that handles him.
Yes, sir, the dog is actually within twenty-four hours a day.
And also, if we did continue to use the dog, it would take a significant amount of time for it to develop a relationship.
Yes, sir, it would. Approximately a year to two years to actually get to know a new handler and to be able to work efficiently with the partner.
Okay, so based on that information, Mr. Mayor, we have the bill of sale right here in front of us. And it just says, for the consideration and the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars to receive and sufficiency of which is acknowledged, the city of Central Georgia does hereby sell, board, and transfer and deliver to James Anthony Salz all right titles and interest in the following. One Belgian K nine male, twenty-eight seven and eight, and Bono. So I move that we go ahead and approve this agreement and authorize you to sign.
Aye. Motion and a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Lieutenant Salz, I have to say that I appreciate your service. I appreciate you, I knew it, I knew you were going down to Florida a while back. But I appreciate you staying, working with the chief as long as you had over there. That was a service to the city, I know you didn't have to do that, but you did it. And personally, I appreciate that, just want to let you know I do.
Thank you, sir.
I really do, I think everybody else does too.
And we wish you well.
Yeah, we do wish you well down there. I met his family yesterday. Thought it was a Saturday, it was a Saturday. No, it wasn't.
It was yesterday.
It was yesterday, okay, it was yesterday, yes.
Man, those ladies just run together, don't they?
They run together, you know, all the time. But he's a beautiful family and I wish you all happiness down there.
Hey, this has kind of been one of the lobby.
But the lobby is locked.
Early voting for the next.
Early voting starts Monday. So there's no restriction when voters come in, they can come in how they want to. So highly encouraged. And also, distancing for people is highly encouraged. And we've also had the things set up so that if, for some reason you need to come back behind the locked door area, we'll make it work that way. The same thing would happen in the course of the police station. That's the only other really public area we have right now. And I know the fire department will have one starting, but I need somebody to make a motion.
Well, are we gonna have a motion and then some discussion? Or so what does the, I guess we can have the motion and then the discussion changes.
If you ever follow the guidelines outlined by the mayor when he was speaking, we'll go through everything again. And, go from there.
Second.
Motion and a second, okay. Any further discussion?
The only question I have is specifically related to the council meetings, the meetings here and there, but certainly have the potential for having more folks in that come in. I will say that having just left the county commission meeting three minutes ago, that they are, they are not, where they are very excited about it. But they were checking temperatures at the door as folks came in. I don't, I don't know if they're continuing to do that on their day-to-day business. The last couple of times I've been over there, entered through the front door, they have checked temperatures at the door. I had somebody push it there. And I don't know that, I'm concerned about us doing that, you know, as one, you know, it's very uncommon to see more than one or two people in the lobby at city hall at a time. But I consider keeping some.
We should probably hold it next door in the larger room so people don't have to sit together as close as they would here.
Well, I think the problem is you don't know. You don't, you'll never know, you know, they don't, people don't RSVP to council meetings. We don't know how many people are coming. So I think you gotta have a procedure, you know, in place for this room.
Yeah.
Where you can't really move forward that way.
Sure.
I understand what you're saying, but I just don't know that practically that will work.
Well, moving forward, I really think that as things get better, more folks are vaccinated, the appropriate thing for us to do is to continue to screen people as they come in. So also, but it's eventually, one day, it's gonna get to the point where we're gonna have a crowded room again and the decisions are made by the governor. And here as a local body, we're gonna have to make.
I think the best case scenario for us at this point is to.
Excuse me? But it will happen slowly. And as it does happen.
There were some specifics in that order about large meetings and about sizes in there. I think that we should comply with those. I know there are some other places in the state who have kept stricter requirements than that. And I think it's because in those areas, you are still seeing some larger reported numbers of COVID cases. I know it's still in parts of Albany and South Georgia, they're still complying with, you know, what is recommended by state law that we're, you know, we're okay.
Yes, sir, I think that was, that's what we should do.
I would like to point out that the court, and when that order's revised, then we'll give you all the information about that.
Sure. Yes, and I think the court is something, we can control the numbers that show up. Because in the past, we've also sent out letters.
Well, we've said, we're back to the twenty-two and that's working out.
That's twenty-two is based on the sound.
The orders that we're under are for the courtroom though, they're not for our lobby site. So just awaiting the city's decision on whether or not we can open our lobby.
Can you help us follow up? How many people come in during the day?
Sometimes there's more than others, but generally not a lot at one time.
Okay. But they have appointments, right? They come in. They come in, they take some.
But they just call us when they're there.
The probation will happen.
Probation has them do an appointment.
But not since they're, they can.
But they just call when they're in the parking lot and we do.
You always, you always monitor who's coming in and all that, right?
Yep, we screen them, questionnaire, temperatures, such as that.
And that's all required by the judicial order?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
The full screening is. We're actually practicing stronger than the judicial order.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
I would, so. But I think that opening is prevalent, I think it's one of those kind of things that we need to do. But at the same time, you know, I think like the mayor suggested that, you know, if they're gonna be taken into the back for meeting or something, that they should be scanned, you know, make sure that their temperature's taken and they're safe. And again, anybody can wear masks at any time that they want to, whether they're in here or outside or whatever, you know. So I'm not saying you cannot wear masks, but, you know. And again, it's one of those kind of things that, you know, we, we make, we could make a decision like that and then reverse it next week if something starts to happen, if something starts to, we start having problems. Then, you know, we can always reverse that as we have in the past, you know. So. But I think Justin's right, I think there probably needs to be some outline as far as the number of people. How many, you know, what would it look like in here and how would we address that? I think that's certainly something that we should include with opening, you know, to suggest that, hey, listen, we will open. But when it comes to a city council meeting or crowded meetings in here, we have to still sort of take into consideration anything different, how we would do that.
Well, I think you correct me if I'm wrong, but the latest version of the executive order removed all of the restrictions on large gatherings and on public meetings, correct?
Yes, it, the wording of the new order is mask and social distancing remains strongly encouraged. And we're gonna change our signage to reflect that.
We could put a restriction on this room. How many people do we have before we allow, we have, you know, every, I think?
I don't, I don't know that you necessarily have to do that. And I think that the, I think if you, I know there was some concern today about personnel to do the temperature checks. I think we have personnel here for every council meeting, so that, I think that would be a big concern. Then again, I mean, maybe you can probably tell more on how effective even of an indicator that is. You know, it's a lot of reasons. Three-year-olds have fever for two weeks, you know, and this includes, I have COVID, so. I guess, I just wanted to ask if you, at least have the conversations, do we want to have any specific provision placed just for council meetings? Because that's the only one that I see as being. You know, it's not that I think it is that risky, but I think there's certainly just, mathematically, there's more risk because there could be some potential, it could be, what is this from C sixty-five, something like that? As opposed to just, you know, I happen to be in the lobby, but I think we may need to, if we're gonna, you know, adopt something, I might need to come up with some specifics and not, you know, we need to be able to give staff clear directions so they know what to do.
Got a recommendation on clear direction?
In every other regard, as far as the public spaces go, I think we just stay in compliance with state law.
Certainly. So if you want, if you come in here, we have somebody at this door.
I really think you only do that on, you know, they can't get in here normally. Normally the council chamber doors are locked unless we're, unless we're having meetings. So I think you just do that before any, any public meeting, council meeting, business meeting, wherever we're having. That would be my recommendation, but welcome discussion.
Is that distancing? Yes, mask, yes. Temperature checks, yes, or what about, I mean, we're trying, we have to have clear guidance, what you want to do in council meetings.
I don't know how I feel about that.
Okay, so you want to do temperature checks and questionnaire?
I, I think we're already set up to do the temperature checks, it doesn't hurt.
Okay.
I don't know if, I don't know if the questionnaire is, is. If you're really worried about somebody sneaking in.
As I sneeze.
If you're really worried about it, I think you can, you know, it's nothing stopping somebody to put whatever they want in that questionnaire. You know, we're not checking about it, I think, I think the temperature, they at least give you something that is measurable, something that's measurable.
I was thinking more of the verbal thing, how are you feeling today?
It is a verbal questionnaire.
And then you look at it, and they think that's a verbal question, just.
It's verbal, it's verbal anyway.
And I'd also think to add to that, you know, if somebody's gonna come behind the locked doors, the city employee that they're wanting to see or that's meeting them, can do that check. And remind them, remind them that they're wearing masks if they're visiting. And that city employee can decide at that point whether they would like to wear a mask.
I think that's fine. Oh, I was just gonna ask a question about the signage, the signage on the front door. Do we have a sign up there that has that list of symptoms? If you're experiencing these symptoms, you know, please, is that, do we?
We can do that, I don't, I don't know that we do, we're gonna change like strongly encourage.
Well, order all clear from the CDC that to put something there that says, if you're experiencing these symptoms, you know, those same ones that they recommend, whatever it is, fever and cough and, you know. Put it on the doors of the chamber, the council chambers. If you're experiencing these symptoms, please, please go watch the live stream of the council meeting and don't, don't attend in person until your symptoms, symptoms bad or something like that. That's the, some, that's, we have that kind of language on the door of the church, just to let people know. There is another option, it's not as if you can't produce a bit, you can still go watch it, you can still ask questions. That would be a good idea.
Do you want to restate the motion?
Well, okay, so I'll restate the motion to say that we re- amend my first motion to include what Councilman Wright has suggested and put in a sign up at the entrance way, asking if you have these different symptoms and that we'll check at the door when we have council meetings to check temperatures. And wearing a mask is highly encouraged. By any public.
And that will go into effect on Monday, May twenty-fourth.
Now, we'll say this as a caveat, if anybody is very uncomfortable with that, I mean, certainly not, it's not. Because, you know, we, you know, we want to make sure everybody's safe. And so, and I'm sure the public wants to be safe, so. And as before, I can assure you, it's like last time when all this stuff started happening, you know, we immediately made decisions about locking down, door, whatever we had to do to protect ourselves and the public. So it's something that we're not gonna not do.
And I'll second that, restate your motion.
Okay. Everybody happy with it? All right? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in both the same side? Okay, now, basically reopen on the first and.
On the twenty-fourth.
On the twenty-fourth, next month. Twenty-fourth, thank you. And Sarah, you got a lot smaller lobby. If you have any problems over there, you need to let us know if you have a specific problem. But as far as I'm concerned, I think everybody else would agree, you have the authority. If you start seeing too many people in there, you ask them to wait outside. Okay? So I think you know where you can get some assistance from if you need it. Tell them you're gonna go outside if they don't want to listen to you. But most people are gonna say, oh yeah, I see there's too many in here, let me get out of here. Okay? All right, now we're down to the comments from the council. All right. Post two.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to say, reiterate the comments we made at the commission meeting this evening, how grateful we are for Houston County and all the work that they did to help us complete Center Park in a way that was done, I think, quicker than a lot of people, myself included, thought it was gonna happen and in a way that was very financially responsible. The number on that, I remember the number, right, it was one thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dump truck loads of dirt that they were responsible for, that's a lot of earth moved. And they literally moved mountains to help us get the park underway. And I made these remarks at every evening this evening, but you know, I know we've all been in those classes at G M events where you hear other cities talking about butt heads with their county commission and how they just, they always seem to be at loggerheads with them. And I say, you know, we really, you know, with a rare exception, we, we work as a team and, you know, the county works well to make sure all three of the cities have everything that they need and we all, we all work together. So we're very grateful to the chairman and all the commissioners for that as well, so. Glad to see the park open and looking, looking full, it's full all the time, just about now, so we're glad to see it rockin' and roll. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Those three, please.
Yeah, I just want to thank Councilman Wright for going down to the county commission and representing us this afternoon. We really appreciate that. Wish we could have all been there, but didn't work out like that this time. So, and I just have a couple of comments here, Mr. Mayor. So we've got some upcoming events in the park. I don't know if anybody made it out there for the last food truck Friday, but it was really exciting to see there were folks everywhere enjoying themselves. I thought it would be up to this point. And I'm really excited about that. I appreciate every single city employee who had something to do with getting that off the, off the ground. And foresight of the council with the decision to go ahead and invest the money, the dollars that we invested in addition to the county to make that happen. So food truck Friday on June fourth. Also, the next day, the next morning, a farmer's market, June fifth. I was, I stopped by the last farmer's market and we had quite a few vendors there. And we had quite a few people there who came out. I think I'm gonna try to get some fresh shrimp next time. But encourage everybody to come on out to those.
Yeah, I had those shrimp, they're awesome. He catches them on Thursday night and drives them up on Friday for the farmer's market on Saturday.
Yeah, so, so, you know, we've been talking about credit cards and fees, but nobody takes. Well, not many of them take credit cards. Some of them do, but that particular vendor wasn't, that particular vendor wasn't, you know. And like so many of us nowadays, I don't carry too much cash, mostly plastic. So, and I'm gonna be prepared next time. So everybody come on out.
Okay, post four.
So this past weekend, we had yoga in the park. And I saw, I drove by there actually, I didn't stop in here because I was working at the recycle center, which we always encourage anybody who'd like to volunteer, come out to the recycle center and volunteer your time to help out over there. But anyways, I, I saw the farmer's market and the yoga, the whole field was full of individuals out there doing yoga. I'm sure if I went out there, I probably wouldn't get back up as soon as they start doing some kind of stretching thing. And so I figured it's best just to drive by and recognize that. But I did go to movie night. So that was, that was really exciting, my grandkids took them out there. We laid a blanket out and some chairs and it was kind of neat standing over there watching all these, all these little children coming out. Saying, hey, I want some popcorn, you know, and they're, and they're all going back like they've got a bag of gold, you know. And so that was fun to watch and everyone really enjoyed themselves that evening. There was three hundred and fifty people that, that attended the movie night. I want to talk about the fire station. The fire station is, is getting darn near done. And so I get a lot of questions every day, are we gonna be able to have a tour of the fire station? You guys having a big party, a shindig, right? I guess, do they call it, do they call it shindig here? I think so.
Whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, so, so they're talking about doing something nice, you know. Chief Jones has assured me that we are gonna have a, an opportunity for the citizens to come out and get a tour of the fire station. And so there's gonna be some plans around that and we'll announce when that day will come and when everyone can come out and celebrate with our city and our wonderful fire station. We also thank Houston County for the sponsorship that helped us get that. That was really nice and it's looking great. I got a, several compliments on our public works department. And if you didn't know, this week is public works week. And so those guys, and it's not like a whole army of them, right? But they do a wonderful job when they go out there, they always have a pleasant personality. And so if they're out there working in your neighborhood, it doesn't take a minute to go offer them a bottle of water, a nice cold bottle of water or soda or something. I know they're busy and I know we like to keep them busy, but it's also nice to extend a little, you know, gratitude out to them. But I've been getting so many compliments about how responsive our public works department has been to issues that people have had in their, in their properties and water main breaks and all kinds of stuff. These guys are like, almost like the fire department, I mean, they're like on it, jiffy, right? And so Mike, great job, I appreciate everything that everybody's doing over there. And so do, so do the citizens.
Thank you, sir, I'll pass it along.
Yes, sir, just, they're just wonderful people. Got a compliment on the fire chief. Right, and so, and what happened was somebody called the fire department to complain about something or ask a question about something. And the fire chief called back in less than five minutes, I think, faster response, you know, I mean, he was like, just talked to the guy and got it all squared away with them. And so, Chief, great work, appreciate you being responsive as you are. This past Monday, we had popsicles in the park with the police chief. And really people, the kids were having a ball, they were playing in the water and they were going up on the hill getting popsicles. Who could ask for a better day than that? And so the chief was out there and he had an opportunity to meet some of the citizens and greet them and stuff. And I'm sure there'll be more of those type of events where you can get out and you get to know them. He's a very, very caring person about our community, about our neighborhoods. And I'm sure we'll be hearing more from him. And we appreciate everything you've been doing, Chief, to, to reach out to the community. Thank you, sir.
So I have, I'm sorry. So I just want to say, you know, the kids are getting out of school next week. And, you know, I suspect that. And, um, you know, I suspect that our workers still be getting a lot of usage, uh, when, when they're looking for something to do, so. So, uh, those public works folks, and those police officers, and those firefighters are gonna be putting in time, and we appreciate that. And, uh, uh, we always look at police officers and firefighters as, as the first responders that show up in time. But, uh, those public works folks show up in time too, when, when they need. They have someone who's always on call because things happen in the city at times. And, and we appreciate that, and again, we wanna make sure that they're recognized. And, uh, I might go out and splash pad myself.
Well, thank you, you know, um, I, I know there's one thing going on with the park, that people seem to love to see the policeman out there. And, and that's a good thing, you have your guys, just, they got a five-minute break, run by there, just, you know, let people see them, 'cause they love it. And, uh, people I talked to out there yesterday, wow, it's good to see the policeman here, you know, this, this is really great. I met one lady from California, who's tired here in Georgia now, she doesn't wanna go back to California. I thought that would be a good, good, uh, choice on her part. Awesome, there was one thing I said apart, originally I thought it, it wasn't big enough. So, but now I'm getting the feeling it's the right size. It's not too big, and they, they like it that big, that way of being, COVID nineteen's not a good thing, obviously, but it, it makes, uh, a family community. And I, I talk to people out there, and they're from all over, you know, all over. It's, um, I talked about the one lady who lived in California, she lives here in Alsonville, but there's other people I've talked to, from Bacon, Byron, Warren Robbins, this Houston County, Peach. They're all welcome, splot put it there, they helped pay for it. We paid for part of it, you know, through city funding, but some parts of it was splot too. And, uh, I wanna talk about one last thing, and that, you know, we have, uh, voting coming up here, and so, you know, and I'd like the people to realize that this is a polling place. Have any voting activity within a hundred and fifty feet of the front door. Any campaigning, any type. And what that means is you, it goes out to the flagpole, so on the other side of the flagpole, people welcome campaigning. You know, they, they can't get any closer than that, and can't be no campaigning inside. That means things like you can't wear T-shirts inside that, that say vote for me, or that type of thing. You know, that, that goes, that goes for everybody. You know, the other thing is that we do have an ordinance against signs on city rightways, no signs on city rightways. If you're not sure where the rightway is, just go fifteen feet from the curb, on back, that's rightway. If your sign is sixteen foot back, that means you have permission to property owner, that's fine, all signs you want. But please don't put them on our, our rightways. And so, that's been a thing in the past, and we forget about it. Four years go between these types of elections, and next thing, we know we got them again. We wanna have a great election, and I know the people are gonna pick the right person for it, so. Uh, I appreciate everybody, and I don't have anything else. Thank you, everybody, for being here, thank you for listening to us.